Okay, it's about that time. Welcome to our Board Workshop today. Appreciate all of you being here. And we are going to get started with our Student Growth and Achievement. Oh, wait, let's see. Pledge of Allegiance? Yeah, that's Elisa. We'll do that first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer. Okay, we will get started now with our Student Growth and Achievement Learning First presentation. And that is going to be our Adult Education Group. And we're going to hear from Mr. John Zerbakan, Assistant Superintendent, and Ms. Marcy Flocken, who's the Director of Adult Education.
Thank you, President Gerard. It's a pleasure to present in front of you, Vice President Price, Board Members, Superintendent, Business Manager. This is a different, you'll have a little different frame of reference here because we're talking Adult Ed. We're talking a space that isn't a wholly traditional K-12 space for us that I think as you listen to this presentation, you'll see the very intentional things that we're doing for our young adults to ensure that they are, you know, capable, you know, contributing members to our society. And the things that Ms. Flocken and her staff have done are truly amazing and the intentionality that they use and frankly, the accountability that they have to ensure their outcome measures. I think you'll be very fortunate to listen to. So with no further ado, Director Marcy Flocken will present for you.
I think I gave the PowerPoint to Ms. Moore. Okay. Yes, I'm Marcy Flocken. This is Doris Berry. She's our Coordinator for our English Language Learning portion of what we do. And I have had some of you out visiting in our schools, which I really, really appreciate. And I wanted to extend a very special thank you and gratitude to Dr. Linford and Ms. Price and Ms. Mercer and Dr. Toon and Mr. Zerbakan, who have all been mentors of mine for a long, long time and have gotten us to where we are. And I'm really proud to present that you should have a handout. It looks like this. And this gets sent out by Dr. Stephanie Patton. She's our Director at the state level. And we get these reports every month. And there are 41 programs in the state. And I'll see if I can get this to work. We serve everyone aged 16 and above. So once a student turns 16, there is no cap on how old a person can be. We've had people as old as late 70s in our program. Last year or year before, we had someone that was 68 graduate with their diploma so they could show their grandchildren that it was important. And one of our big goals, it's a funded outcome for us, is to transition all of our students into some sort of post-secondary education or unsubsidized employment. And that sort of thing is tracked up to two years out from when a student leaves us. As far as the Learning First portion goes, there's so many things that we do. But it really came back to me when we thought about it. It's still back to relevance, rigor, and relationships. And we tried to capitalize upon that. We had over 1,100 students this year, which was a record number for us since I've been the Director. And it becomes more difficult when you have that many students and you're having to personalize it for every single one because every single one of our students comes in with different backgrounds, different numbers of credits, some of them speaking up to four different languages. We'll talk about that in a minute. So it presents some really unique challenges. And so if anything, we have to differentiate and individualize nearly everything, which is very difficult when you're dealing with ages 16 to 68. Might be in the same room, as a matter of fact. So our program at a glance, over 1,100 this year, approximately 500 of them were English language learners from 46 countries, speaking 31 or more different languages. We didn't try to count all of the tribal languages that many of them come with. So that's, it's probably closer to 50 or more languages that they speak when they come to us. To date, we have over 250 diplomas. And I think as of today, 54 GEDs. And we have 833 academic gains. And these are all based on standardized testing that we're required to do. And this year, we provided services for 261 Davis District High School students, 30% or more coming to us with less than five credits. And some of this is measured on here. And we'll show you right here. These are the countries that were represented over the last couple of years. And you can see that they're from all over the world. I always kind of laugh when people say, "Well, do you have that translated in Spanish?" And I go, "Hmm, maybe." And maybe the other 30 that I need to worry about as well. So we have some technology in our building that translates all of these and 200 more approximate languages. So we use that on registration days and nights, and it's lovely. So another thing is we, this is our performance goals. And the goals are at the top. We're the only program out of 41 that have made all 12 goals. If you direct your attention to like the right side, that's kind of the ESOL site. And you can see how many other programs in the state are doing well with ESOL, like hardly any. A lot of them are doing pretty well with some of the diploma stuff. But when it comes to ESOL, thanks to her and some budget that we've had to buy really, really good rigorous curriculum, our students are making gains like crazy. And not only are we meeting the goal, we're exceeding it in some cases by over 20%. And so we have been in the top one or two for the last five years consecutively, especially when you look at the other 40 programs. So we have to brag about that a little bit. We individualize a lot. Can you speak about how you do that with 30 languages in the room?
Well, one of the best things that we do, people say, "So you speak how many languages?" I say, "Well, English very well." But what we do is we divide it over seven levels, which we're able to do now with the funding that we have. And so we try, and of course, there's still levels within levels, as everyone knows, that happens in K-12. But what we do is we divide it by levels so that we can address the needs of a smaller group. And then this is a group of adults that know language. They have huge language skill. And so we transport, we transfer it at the lower levels and with a lot of visualization and role play and things like that. And our curriculum is very visual. But we do emphasize everything, not just listening and speaking. Everyone has to learn to read and to write. We integrate phonics into, this year, into every level, including our advanced level because they will learn that no other place. And English is a deep orthography. So you have Spanish and Italian and Portuguese and Ukrainian. And those are very superficial orthographies. Children can come in and learn those in several months. English speakers, it takes a minimum of two years to learn the orthography. And then we have, so we teach that at every level. And we, because our levels are divided, we are able to meet and know and create relationships and classroom environments with all of our students. And it helps a lot.
It's kind of nice to have the grandma kind of lady in the room that calms the 17 or 18-year-old one down a little bit, you know? Kind of discipline them like a grandma's kind of fun to watch. Our challenge is, which John just addressed with me, due to federal administration's budget requests that are, it's on the House floor as we speak, we lost about 39% of our funding. However, I just learned that the district's going to help us out for a year with that. And I can't express my gratitude enough because I would have had to lose about half of my students, staff and students. And so we are very grateful. I cannot tell you how grateful I am for that and how much it's going to mean to our communities because these are people that are our neighbors. They are people that are taxpayers. They are people that, I always learned that a high tide rises all boats. And these are the people that help raise our tides. And those of you that have been to our graduations will know that they come with really special stories. And it's very powerful to know that when they leave us, they are leaving us with all the skills that they need. And I don't think all schools can really say, "Gosh, a really high percent of our people that leave are going to be great." But ours are, I just brag about that. Here's some of the things that our students say. One that was really impactful for me was, "It's been very helpful getting my diploma and making me believe in myself." These are people that have had so many failures in their lives for many, many multiple reasons. And then they come and they get that relationship with the teacher or our staff. And all of a sudden, they have the confidence to do it. And our expectations are very high. And I explain to people, "If you don't make progress, we don't get money. That's the bottom line. We have to get the outcomes." And it helps the students. They're like, "Really? Oh, well, that's cool because I can, you know, refer my friend or my neighbor." And we tell them, when they take a post-test, you might be funding your friend or your neighbor or your son or your granddaughter. And they just take the test willingly and we get these outcomes, and we love it. It's the best place to work in the world. Do any of you have any questions or comments?
Ms. Hogan?
Yeah, just a quick question. So is there a fee for community members that want to partake in this? Or is this a free?
Yes, it's regulated through policy. So we, as a program, are only allowed to charge $100 for a whole calendar year. So our, and we can't charge for textbooks or anything above that $100. So for $100, they can come for a whole year in either program and get everything they need without paying any extra money. It's actually less than like a high school fee.
Ms. Barber?
Okay, first a comment. Thank you so much. I didn't know very much about Adult Ed until I came to graduation last year. And I brought my little kids with me, and they still talk about the stories that they heard. It was amazing. So thank you for that. My question is kind of similar. Talked about when you were saying that outcomes, your funding relies on outcomes. Is it not per adult enrolled? It's adults who are successful that we get the funding for?
It's a little bit of both. So it's a pretty complicated formula. It takes into account some of the numbers of students that we serve. That's part of it. Another funding point is student retention. So they measure how many hours. And as you can see on the right-hand side, the goal is to have every student, or the average, be 100 hours. And that's because the research shows that if we can have a student 100 hours, they're very likely to make educational-level gains and more likely to earn their diplomas or GEDs. And so student retention is a big funding point. If we get 40 hours in a post-test, that secures a good number of our funding. And 40 hours can be weeks and weeks depending on what schedule they choose. So that means that they're going to be with us some months in order to get that 40 hours. And then, of course, many stay much longer than that because they have a lot more to do. And so our student retention is one of the best in the state, especially amongst the larger programs. It's harder to get retention in the larger programs. So anybody that's above, say, 500 or 600, it gets more challenging to get that retention number. So that's one of the highest numbers we've had. There was, I think we had one that was pretty high last year. But last year, we didn't have quite as many students. So it's really good.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Mercer?
I just wanted to say that I came, when I came to visit and as we've continued the communication, I'm so impressed by the creativity that your program requires of you and how much work you're willing to do to help our students be successful. And we have a phenomenal adult education program. I wish everyone could see this sheet that has complicated numbers on it. And Davis District is the only one across the entire board that has made gains in every level. And that is because of the personal attentive care that you are giving and your teachers are doing such a phenomenal job of. And it's not an easy job. So a huge shout-out and thank you to you for your work. And I realize that that also includes figuring out funding and figuring out so many complicated issues. But your students there are known and they're succeeding. And they are becoming productive members of our society. And that is a huge success for our county, thanks to you.
Thank you so much. And I can't do it without a team. And I tell my staff, every time we meet, I tell them in 34 years, I've never worked with a staff this amazing, ever. They're amazing, every single one of them. And they work very well as a team. And that's what makes it happen is staff that you've built that relationship with, that culture with, and they are just willing to do all the hard work with you. You know, like we're just right there with each other and support each other. And they're the ones that have made it happen because they're the ones that are boots on the ground. They know this stuff. And it's them. I don't even like to take credit.
Well, I want to say thank you also, Ms. Flocken and Ms. Berry. What you do is so important. And it's very obvious to me that it's not just a job for you. It's a labor of love.
It is. It's a service. That's what we call it. It's a service and a labor of love. And Dan, I'm looking at you because you always make me cry when we have meetings, and now it's my turn. Because that's how, that gets you in the heart. When you come and you see our classrooms, it doesn't hit you here, it hits you here.
In your heart, right, right. Well, it's very impressive what you do. And you're really changing lives and impacting families. So thank you so much for coming to present to us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Tim Luffel is going to be presenting to us about our 2425 budget. And I don't know if Mr. Nate Lee is going to help you with that, but I'll let you work on that and introduce maybe Ms. Manning and however you want to do it.
First of all, I want to express appreciation for those comments about how hard it is to learn English. I tried for 13 years, and that's why I went to finance because numbers made so much more sense. So thanks for that explanation. Nate and Jenny, do you want to come up? So for years and years, you've been listening to Craig Carter and myself and Steve Snow talk about budgets. And apparently Craig and Steve found it more fun to be retired, apparently. And so we are super blessed in our district to have Nate, who replaced me in finance, and Jenny, who's replacing Steve Snow. And so tonight, the purpose is, by law, by June 1st, we have to have a budget posted, both for the final legal budget for the current year and then a proposed budget for next year, to the public. And somebody could come into our office and ask to see the proposed budgets. We have to post it online. So we like to present it to the Board, obviously, before we show it to the public. And so the purpose of tonight and not 10 minutes or so is to kind of show you where we think we're going to finish this year and the different funds. And maybe just a little issues about next year that we're looking at as we go forward. And then we'll talk about the plan for the budget for the rest of the year. So I wanted to start off talking about the different funds and what our goals are in each of the funds. So when we talk about the General Fund, we have two primary goals. One is, the Board has tasked us for several years now to keep the economic stabilization account, which is like the Board's rainy day fund, at 5% of our budget. So as our budget goes up every year, we need to put a little bit more money in that reserve account to keep it at 5%. So that's one goal. The other goal is between $6 and $9 million, we try to put in our reserve, our savings account. For those of you that have visited Moody's, you're well aware that those fund balances are very important to them. And they look at those, and they want to see those consistently rise. In capital, we're trying to make sure we take care of current needs and put a little away for the future. We know capital is big facilities-type things. And so over time, for example, a football field, every 10 to 12 years, we're going to have to replace the carpet on the football field. So the goal in capital is to take care of our current needs and also to save a little bit for those projects that we know we're going to have to replace through the years. Debt, because debt is paid for by our taxpayers with a tax rate, the goal is just to have enough to make our mortgage payments. We're not trying to save money in the debt fund. We're not trying to not get quite enough, but just just enough to make those payments. And we know what those payments are every year. And so we set that tax rate to generate just enough. Nutrition services, the biggest one in that is just to make sure that our ongoing revenues and our ongoing expenses are equal. So prices of food goes up, price of labor goes up. So we have to look at lunch prices to make sure that we keep those balanced so that we don't get upside down in those accounts. Insurance and dental, we wanted to get a fund balance, which we have. So the industry standard is to try to have three months of expenses in your fund balance. So we have about 4.3 in our fund balance right now. So that's the goal. So now, because we charge these premiums to the departments in our district, we don't want to make a bunch of money off our departments. We just want to make sure we're charging enough to hold that program in a good, solid spot. And lastly is the school funds. We want to have a little reserve in the school funds, but most of the money that comes in the school funds is from fees and from students. So we don't want to charge students more than what we're going to use the years that they're here. So if I charge Emily $100, then I would like to use that $100 to help her in this school year. So we don't like to run big balances in there because we want to try to serve the students with the money they're paying that year. So different funds have different goals. And so we'll talk about the different funds real quick and kind of where we think they're going to be.
All right, some highlights that we have from the 25-year is we're anticipating almost $782 million worth of revenues. That's between state, local, and federal revenue. Our anticipated expenses are $778 million, which leaves us the fund balance of, or the balance of $8.9 million, which is $2 million for the economic stabilization that Tim was talking about and the $6.9 million that we're going to do for unaside fund balance. One of our goals is to keep the teacher salaries competitive. So this year, for next year, the starting teacher salary will go up to $63,191. The majority of our budget goes towards directly interacting and serving students on a daily basis with just over 10% going to indirect services. Our different fund revenues, we have the General Fund, which 70% of that comes from the state, which is why we're very interested in what happens on the legislature each year. The Capital Fund is funded mostly with taxes and debt services taxes. School Lunch is a mix of different funds with just 26% is coming from meal sales from the students. On the Capital Fund, the majority of that comes from bond proceeds with a little bit of local revenue. That funded the new junior high that's opening and the rebuilds at Bountiful and Sunset. Then we also have the remodels. $6 million is for large maintenance projects, $5.5 million for instructional technology. And then we have some other projects that we have. The Self-Insurance Fund that Tim talked about is in good shape. We, the goal is to have three months' worth of reserve. And right now, at the end, we're estimating we'll have 4.2, just over four months' worth of reserve for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Jenny. So I'll go through a few slides. For debt service, this is what we pay to service our outstanding debt. We're anticipating about $70 million in revenue. We make our principal payments in May and November. So we've just made our recent one. $46.8 million interest, $19 million. Our outstanding debt that we'll have at the end of June, our debt capacity is $3 billion. That's gone up from $2.7 billion last year. And so we're only running at 20% capacity. So we have a lot of more capacity that we're not utilizing. But we are being responsible in keeping those debt rates down for our taxpayers. One thing that's coming up with next year that's always important for our budget is our birth rates and incoming students. So you'll notice, so our 12th graders this year were born in 2007. There were 6,049 births. We had 6,107 enrolled. You might ask why. This is also accounting for move-ins, move-outs. And so that's higher. As you go down to the current kindergartners we have, who were born in 2019, there's 5,098 births. And we only had 4,033 enrolled in district schools. So the births are dropping 1,000 over this timeframe of our current students. But our enrollment is dropping 2,000. A lot of different factors for that. There's a lot other options families have for education, charter schools, homeschooling, vouchers, online school. So that's a problem that we've discussed before that will be coming up that we'll have to address. And then this is just a graph of our enrollment. So this upcoming year, we're projecting we'll be down about 900 students. So we have our little COVID dip that we recovered from. But ever since then, with the birth rate going down and other options for the students in the county, it is going down. It's projected to go down for another five to six years. Even if it did go back up the birth rate next year, it's not another five years until those students show up in kindergarten. So our enrollment will continue to decline. And now, Tim.
So those numbers that Nate just showed are really important because we're funded on a per-student basis. And 70% of our general fund revenues come from the state. It presents a challenge in the district. And we've been talking about that. How do we shrink the district? Not just schools, obviously, but district office footprint and administrative positions. And you'll notice through some of the things we've done, we've already looked at some of those and made those changes. And so it will be, when you're growing as a district and you're getting more money, it's a little bit easier to deal with than when you're losing students. So that's something we'll have to be looking at as we do the budgets in the future years. This is just a quick summary of our new revenue for next year. We've talked about this. This $27.9 million does anticipate a tax increase, which we'll talk about more as the summer goes on. And we'll talk about our schedule in just a minute here. One thing, this is just, I'm not going to read through this, but as we fund new things with our budget, we try to tie each of the new things that we're funding to our strategic plan. And so we went through and looked at all of the different things that we funded in this next year's budget and figured out where does that fit into the strategic plan. We look at this as we're building the budget because if it doesn't fit in the strategic plan, then we might not, should be funding it. And so every one of the things that we funded fits somewhere in the strategic plan that we look at. So we try to tie that every year. So you can look through this. I won't go through those individually. But everything we did did tie to one part of our strategic plan, at least. So next steps for the budget. We will post the budget tomorrow online, so it's available for public inspection. On June 3rd, we will have a budget hearing, which will be a time certain at 6:00. Any patron can come and talk to us about the budget. And that is for the final legal budget for the current year. So how we're finishing the current budget. After that point, later on in that same meeting, we'll have a business item to adopt the final legal budget for the 2425 school year. Now, because we're proposing a tax increase in this budget, we will have to go through the truth and taxation hearing. And so the budget hearing for next year's budget will be on August 19th. And it will be a truth and taxation hearing where we'll invite the public to come and give us comments about their thoughts on the 2526 budget. That evening on the 19th, after we listen to the public comments, we will have a business item to adopt the budget for next year. And so the Board can take that choice. We have to have a budget adopted by September 1. So we'll have to, if, for example, on some night, if for some reason on the 19th, we decide we're not ready to make that final motion, we can plan another meeting before September 1. Typically, most school districts will adopt the budget that night, but that will be up, obviously, to the Board. So that's our process for next year. Any questions?
If there are no questions, okay.
I have a question. Just looking at, in the capital, the maintenance costs that come out of that, how do we anticipate those costs? Since I know in our last meeting, we approved some significant maintenance costs for boilers and things like that. So I'm sure there's an awareness of it. How are you prioritizing? How are you prioritizing and tracking that to make sure?
That's a great question, and it's almost like you set me up, so thank you, that was nice. We have Weston, Weston has a really big, big spreadsheet. It kind of makes me cry when I look at it, it's really cool.
Yes.
It has every school and every different component of a school, from bathrooms to flooring to roofs to boilers, all these things. And we have an assessment of every particular area of every school. And we grade it one through four. And so when it comes time for Weston to look at, how am I going to allocate that six million dollars this year? He looks at that facility assessment and he's looking for the red ones. Like what are the worst areas of the worst of our schools? And that's where we allocate the money to. And so we have that facility assessment tool is what drives all of our budgets when it comes to capital and maintenance.
Okay, I just have one more question, also kind of observation. And looking at that slide that shows the decline in population, that it's showing that there is a decrease in births. But then the significant decrease in enrollment that hits about fourth grade, it looked like, which when you look at that, that is COVID. So that trend of when COVID hit, there was a significant increase in families that have chosen to opt out of public education.
We had a nice rebound the year after COVID, but we didn't rebound all the way to your point.
Okay, any more? Oh, Ms. Powell.
Hey, so in capital, you guys mentioned X percent for instructional technology for the capital fund. Does that include like student refresh lap for laptops?
That's exactly what that is.
Okay.
About five and a half million is what we spend every year on refresh for student devices.
Okay, and then just kind of piggyback off Ms. Stevens' question. Do we have like when students exit our Davis district? Do we have like an exit survey or any sort of thing we can find out like why they're exiting? Do we do any sort of thing like that?
I'm not aware, but superintendent, okay.
We have different exit codes that we use for the students. And so if they transfer to another district, we use a code. If they transfer to a charter school, we use a code. So we have some sense of where they're going, but that's dependent on the, the school secretary or the registrar in secondary settings, how they enter those codes.
Okay, any other questions?
Hi, this is.
Ms. Powell.
This is just a general question. I'm just wondering what you feel our greatest success has been this past year in the budget and maybe what our biggest struggle is. And also I'm looking forward to some summer reading with the new report that's coming out.
I'm so glad somebody reads that. I think our biggest success this year, as we looked at the budget, was starting to, as, as we lose enrollment, our schools naturally lose employees because we fund schools based on the number of students there. But district offices don't. We don't have funding ratios based on students. And so the focus that we've had and the positions that we've been able to absorb as we've had retirements and people leaving has been a great success in that as far as the percentage that we've reduced at the district level, it mirrors that of our schools. And that's important. And that will be our same challenge, I guess, to answer the question going forward. Because if we're losing a thousand students per year, that significant amount of revenue, how do we absorb that? The schools will absorb some of it because we'll have less teachers in our schools, but it needs to be shared district-wide. And that's a challenge that we'll have to keep looking at.
Can I, can I follow up on that? Just, and I appreciate Tim mentioning that. As I have the responsibility as the chief budget officer, and so far, far smaller than the CFO duties there. But I'll tell you, I, I sincerely appreciate the leadership in our district, the team. Because I really haven't cut positions myself, but I appreciate the team just being cognizant. And when we say there's a hiring freeze, to be really serious and thoughtful about that, even things that we think are just untouchable because they're so important to the work we do. We're being very evaluative, knowing that we won't have the same kind of ratio, easy, I say easy, just pressure-free decision-making. We have to, we have to do that on our own, and this team has done just an exceptional job of not protecting their departments or circling the wagons, but really saying, how can we also absorb the budget cuts at the district level? So really grateful for a good team.
We went through quite a long process, and in the very end, after a lot of thought, we decided we should keep the superintendent, so.
Good choice. Any, any other questions, board? Okay. Oh, Ms. Powell.
So as we've been doing boundary studies and looking at potential school closures, do we have, have we looked at numbers of how much we're paying extra if we're keeping schools open? Not that I'm advocating to close schools, but do we have those numbers?
Yeah, so when we, to run an elementary school, so we're talking, not the teachers, because the teachers will go wherever the students are. But for another principal and a custodian and heat and lights and all the things to run a building, it's about a million dollars for an elementary. Somewhere around two million for a junior high and a little bit more for a high school. So that's something we consider if we do, for example, when we consolidated Fremont Elementary, that took a million, or yeah, a million dollars of operating savings back into the budget that we were able to use other places. And so that is a consideration, not the only one, obviously, but it's about.
Okay, see no more questions. I, I just want to sincerely thank our team, Mr. Lefel, Ms. Manning, Mr. Lee, for the outstanding job that you're doing in our district to keep Davis School District financially stable and healthy. So we appreciate you. Thank you. Would you be able to send that presentation to us, Mr. Lefel? All of that information? Very helpful, thank you. Okay. We are now going to hear from Assistant Superintendent Dr. Logan Toon on the annual report for the Gifted and Talented Program. And you can introduce who else is going to help you, Mr. Strain, Christie?
Thank you, President Gerard, Vice President Price, board members. It's a pleasure to introduce this item, and I'll be very brief. There's a special legislative funding set aside for our enhanced opportunities for advanced learners. And the, the legislative funding takes the form of a state grant that we apply for each year through Utah Grants. One of the assurances that we give in that grant application process is that we provide an update on the program to the local education agency board each year. And so this discussion is a requirement of our grant application for continuation of funding for these programs. Our, our funding for the program primarily goes to support our deep programming, which you'll hear from our team on. We also have AP funding and concurrent enrollment funding, those, and IB funding. Those come in separate batches of funds. But because they're all related programs, we're using this opportunity to provide a full program update for all of our advanced learning opportunities. And so Ms. Christie Burgess from our Teaching and Learning Department is going to take the microphone, and she'll run the majority of the, of the presentation. Feel free to pause and ask questions along the way, or we can ask questions at the end as well. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Burgess.
Thank you, Dr. Toon. I'm deeply grateful to be here tonight and to talk to you about DEEP, which stands for Davis Enhanced Education Programs. And as Dr. Toon mentioned, each year we apply for Utah's Enhancement for Accelerated Students Program, or EASP Grant, which provides funding for Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, and Gifted and Talented Programs. So today we'll take a look at each of these programs, which, which fall under the umbrella of DEEP. And I love the name DEEP because it really does describe what we're trying to do in each of these programs, which is to help our students dive deeper in their thinking and in their learning. So let's dive in. Offering a continuum of services is considered best practice in gifted education because it ensures that advanced learners have access to a range of options tailored to their individual needs, abilities, and circumstances. As shown on this slide, Davis School District does an excellent job at providing advanced programs at both the secondary and elementary levels. And also in all schools, as well as in specific magnet schools throughout the district. So we'll take a look at each one of these quadrants tonight. First, AP and honors courses are available at all of our secondary schools. We'll focus tonight on Advanced Placement or AP since that falls under this EASP Grant. This slide shows the number of AP exams taken in the Davis School District over the past five years. So the blue bars indicate the total number of tests taken, while the light blue bars show the tests that were passed with a score of three, four, or five. And as you can see, the number, both the number of exams taken, as well as the number of exams passed, has increased over the past years, which is exciting. And we're actually nearing pre-pandemic levels of participation in AP, which is also exciting. And you'll note that last year in two thousand and twenty-four, we had the highest number of exams passed in the past five years. So we're doing really well in, in our AP program. We're also focused on making sure that our AP programs are more representative of all students in our district. Last year, the number of AP exams taken, as you can see, increased among Black, Hispanic or Latino, Pacific Islander, and white students. We recognize that there's still work to do. We did decrease in some areas, including American Indian, Asian, multiracial students, and those who didn't report a race. However, we're encouraged by, by the progress that we're making in including more students, encouraging more students to participate in AP courses. We've been particularly focused on expanding the access for students who are experiencing socioeconomic disadvantage. Recent legislation that has been passed in the state of Utah covers the entire cost of AP exams for any student who's experiencing socioeconomic disadvantage. So our AP coordinators and school counselors at each school have been trying to communicate this opportunity to students so that finances will not be a barrier to any student for participating in early college-level classes. We're also working to make sure that AP information is more accessible to both parents and students at our back-to-school nights, at college or university nights, and on school websites. Additionally, we're encouraging schools to consider selecting AP student ambassadors who can mentor peers and encourage other students to participate in early college opportunities. And this peer-to-peer model can help students have the confidence to, to try a class that maybe they wouldn't have, have felt like they could take because they've seen someone, one of their peers have success in that. So this model can help strengthen both recruitment as well as student engagement. Another example of our commitment to AP in the Davis School District is, is our Intermountain AP Summer Institutes. For many years, Davis School District has been the only APSI in the Intermountain West. Last year, for the first time, we offered both an online APSI as well as an in-person AP Summer Institute. And we've had participation from around the world in our online institute. We'll continue both, offering both online as well as in-person summer institutes this summer. And all Davis School District teachers who, who enroll can register for free. So it's no charge to them. Hopefully, this ensures that they're well-prepared to support their students in succeeding in the AP classes. Let's look now at the advanced programs offered at our secondary magnet schools. Clearfield High School offers the International Baccalaureate Program, which actually celebrates its twentieth anniversary this next year. Though it's small, the program is growing in the number of students participating, in the number of students pursuing an IB diploma, and also those who are taking multiple IB courses. And we're, we're implementing similar equity and access strategies in IB as we are in AP, trying to communicate these opportunities to all students, making sure that they know of the financial opportunities, that, that that should not be a barrier to them participating in the IB program. While we've had robust early college courses in grades nine through twelve for many years, this year we've expanded our focus to meet the needs of advanced learners in junior high. I'm not sure why the PowerPoint is so small. It did not look like that to me on my computer, but we'll get to a better version if you'd like.
We can see it.
Well, this year, we've offered for the first time DEEP Magnet classes at three junior highs in the district, at Shoreline, South Davis, and West Point. So we've identified and offered DEEP Placement to a hundred and fifty seventh graders this year at those three schools. They've been identified through testing and have the opportunity to choose either full-time placement at the DEEP Magnet School or a hybrid placement, where they can attend the DEEP Magnet School for one day and their boundary school for the other day. This helps with transportation, alleviate some of the, the burden on families to provide transportation to the magnet school. And also allows students the opportunity to stay connected to their neighborhood school, where they may want to participate in athletics or fine arts. Access is also an important priority at the junior high level as it is in high school. The cognitive abilities test, or COGAT, which we use to identify for both DEEP as well as accelerated math classes, in the past has only been offered during the school day here at the district offices. And families were responsible to bring their, check their student out of school and bring their student here to the district office to test. For the first time last year, we provided busing to any sixth-grade student in the district who was interested in taking the COGAT test. They were bused from their elementary school here to the district, to central testing locations, to have the opportunity to take the COGAT test and be considered for these advanced courses at the junior high. We're excited about this. We, we tested this past year fourteen hundred sixth-grade students for possible placement in DEEP and, and/or accelerated math classes, and feel that this opportunity provides access to many more students than previously, than, that had previously been done. Next year, we'll continue implementing DEEP in eighth grade in the twenty twenty-five to twenty-six school year at these same schools. We'll also be adding seventh-grade DEEP Science in addition to DEEP Social Studies and DEEP English Language Arts that has been offered this past year. Now moving to elementary. We're fortunate in our district to offer DEEP Enrichment Groups, formerly known as SEM, at every elementary school in the district. This is very, very unique. Most districts do not offer such an opportunity. With DEEP Enrichment Groups, DEEP Specialists at each school identify the top ten to twelve percent of K through six students for participation in language arts and math-science enrichment groups. This year, our priorities, our focus has been on aligning the way we identify for DEEP Enrichment Groups. It had been very different from school to school. So we're trying to make sure that our, our identification procedures are consistent from school to school across the, the district. And also making sure that our programming is consistent. There was a wide variety of which grade levels were being serviced and for how much time. So we're trying to make DEEP look more consistent, more similar from school to school to provide equity. We're also trying to make sure that DEEP time is not being diverted to, to meet other school needs. Sometimes DEEP Specialists had been asked to help with the yearbook or help with the spelling bee or the Martin Luther King Contest, which are all wonderful things. But we're now trying to ensure that these EASP-funded DEEP hours are used directly to serve identified students. And to provide a full continuum of services, we also offer full-time DEEP Magnet classes, which were formerly known as PAL and Spectrum at magnet schools at the elementary level. Currently, we are providing DEEP Magnet services to seven hundred and ten students across nine elementary schools in the district. Now historically, some schools have offered DEEP first through third grades, while other schools have offered DEEP fourth through sixth grades. We're now shifting toward a DEEP first through sixth model at several of our sites. We've, we've found that that provides more continuity for students and helps families who have multiple students in the program to not have students at, at different elementary schools. Mountain View has long been a DEEP first through sixth school, but as Lakeside transitions over to Clinton and DEEP at Burton transitions to Caseville, those two schools will offer DEEP first through sixth-grade classes by two thousand and twenty-six to twenty-seven. Bountiful this upcoming year will add a fourth-grade class and is on track to become a DEEP one-through-six school as well. We continue to offer DEEP fourth through sixth at West Bountiful, Centerville, and Valley View Elementarys. Our recent priorities within the elementary DEEP Magnet Program include aligning district and gifted and talented curriculum through a newly created DEEP Guiding Coalition. Again, we're trying to align things so that the DEEP program looks similar from school to school and so that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum for our DEEP Magnet Program. We've also focused on clarifying our identification procedures for our DEEP Magnet Program, making sure that those are available on our, on the district's website, on the DEEP page. making sure that those are available on our, on the district's website, on the deep page, and we've worked to enhance the appeals process. So as mentioned earlier, the goal of every deep program is truly to help students go deeper in their thinking, pushing them to those higher levels of thinking, challenging them beyond um just going through the basics. We like to uh think about water skiing versus snorkeling versus scuba diving. Too often in education, we just kind of water ski through learning, covering a lot of content in a short amount of time. But we want to provide students with opportunities to go deeper to both snorkel and scuba dive in their thinking. We're fortunate in our district to offer such a broad continuum of high-quality programs to meet the needs of the advanced learners in our district. Last year, we created a theme song for deep using a tune from the Disney movie Encanto, and we shared it with all the elementary deep students. While the fourth and fifth grade deep magnet students at Lakeside wanted to take it one step further, they choreographed actions to the song, which I would like to show you today to close. Um, this this song encompasses some of the goals of our deep program and shows the enthusiasm of some of our deep magnet students. Well, I'm deeply grateful for your time and your support of deep and the programs that we have here in the Davis School District. Thank you so much for for your support. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, Ward? That was a great presentation, by the way. Love that. And the ending was especially good. Questions? Who's first?
I do have questions if no one else does.
Okay, Ms. Powell?
Thank you. Um, I had a kid in the deep program for a bit and absolutely loved it. I was just wondering for entrance into the deep program, how do you go about, is it completely the COGAT or are there other factors as well? And it may be different for elementary and the SEM, I don't remember what you call it now, and then versus the junior high.
So the COGAT is used in both the elementary and junior high magnet program identification. It is not used for deep enrichment group identification. Deep enrichment groups, we use um achievement test data such as Acadients or RISE in conjunction with teacher recommendation. For elementary magnet placement, we use both the COGAT as well as achievement test data. Um, and those scores are aggregated and and students are ranked according to those scores.
So for the elementary magic magnet program, it's not like there's no subjectivity. It's just all testing for the most part? Or are there like teacher recommendations involved or not?
There are not um teacher recommendations. Most districts are moving away from that. There's a lot of research out there that shows that teacher recommendations are quite subjective, not a reliable form of identification. Um, in the past, the district has used teacher recommendations, but they had a less than ten percent response rate. So it was not not a reliable measure for us to use. However, when when we've received appeals from parents who've appealed the placement decision, we've reached out to classroom teachers to get additional information, that anecdotal information that's also important to consider.
Gotcha. And so um when you guys do the testing, do you invite all sixth graders, basically, at least for the junior high program, to test? But does maybe some don't test? Or is it just like, because I know in my elementary, we used to have signs that saying, oh, if you want to apply, you apply, but it's not like everybody's testing. It's just whoever wanted to apply could apply to test. How does it working?
And that's the case for sixth grade as well. It's it's not universal testing where everyone is tested. It's based on those who are interested in being considered for deep and/or accelerated math. Um, we we tried very hard to communicate the opportunity to all sixth graders in the district. We sent multiple emails to all sixth-grade parents, um, sent the information to to sixth-grade teachers. And we have, we want to increase the opportunities to communicate next year so that everyone's aware of that opportunity.
And do you do that for the elementary magnet programs as well? Do you do like emails and and stuff like that? Like not just for sixth grade, for junior high?
Right. We we do send targeted emails to students who scored well on RISE or Acadients. That would be good candidates for the program. We send those targeted emails each fall, particularly to the parents in our entry point years. Our entry point years are first grade and fourth grade. So we we target our kindergartners as well as our third graders. This next coming, upcoming year, we hope to utilize our classroom teachers. We're we're learning that parents tend to read emails if they come from the teacher rather than from the district. That's been a challenge and interesting in this digital age that we're going to be returning to passing out paper flyers. We're going to have paper flyers and ask classroom teachers to share those opportunities, particularly sixth-grade teachers, so that all students are aware of the opportunity to register and be considered for these advanced classes.
So you basically identify maybe the top ten percent of the achievement test takers and then send those targeted emails out. You don't send like general emails out to all, everybody in the entrance-level grades?
We did that last year because we had a name change. We changed from PAL and Spectrum to deep. So we did send an email to every single parent and every single elementary school parent in the district and made them aware of the opportunity to test. Anyone in the district is welcome to test. We have posters at every elementary school in the district hanging in the entryway in both English and Spanish with QR codes that link to our website where the applications are. Um, we we did send those targeted emails to, I believe, the top twenty percent. Um, but again, that doesn't preclude anyone from applying and and being considered for deep.
Okay, thanks so much for answering my questions.
Okay, Ms. Mercer?
I have a question too. And I've had some children that have participated both in the enrichment classes and in the magnet, and it's been wonderful for for both my students. So thank you so much for all your work with that. Um, one of the questions was, you you had some great data on participation of minority groups. Do you have data on the participation of socio-economically challenged students?
I I don't have that data with with me tonight, but we did see an increase.
Okay, but it does exist?
It does exist, yeah.
For those of us that like spreadsheets.
Yeah, I'd be happy to to send that to you.
I would be interested in that. That would be interesting. And I'm grateful that you're reaching out to those groups as well. And connected with that, you mentioned busing options for students because I I do know, you know, we we were lucky that we were able to take our kids out of school, check them out for the day, and bring them up to the district to do that testing. But that isn't an option for every student. Um, do you, are there, and again, I apologize for asking for numbers when that's a complicated thing to answer on the fly. Um, but have has that increased the number of students that are being tested by having the busing available? And do you have an idea of what percentage that might increase the number of those that are tested?
I don't know an exact percentage, but I I do know, and I can find that out from our testing coordinator, just our district testing coordinator is Jody Bragg, but she has definitely indicated that there has been an an interest, an increased interest in taking the COGAT test because of that opportunity to be bused.
That's wonderful. Um, also, I just wanted to say, I I was part of South Davis Junior High when we went through the transition of moving from honors classes to um the the deep magnet. And and that was, I was on the community council when we had to vote to make those changes, and those were difficult decisions to make. Um, but that transition, I believe, has has resulted in a better program in the end. And and so I'm grateful that we we were we were able to make that transition. So thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you. Also, my kids have benefited from this program. Um, and my son took the bus to take the test just a while ago. And I was wondering, of that percentage that you had tested, um, how many actually ended up utilizing the program? I know you had said that there's like a hundred and something enrolled in the junior high um in the magnet programs. And how many spots do you have that you could have filled? Just curious if it was filled to capacity. Um, I know my son and most of his friends decided not to do it just because they wanted to all stay with their friends.
Right. Well, I appreciate that question. This being the first year, um, we don't have a lot of data to compare to. But we did offer two sections of deep at South Davis and Shoreline. We only had enough students interested at West Point to offer one section of seventh-grade deep this year. However, next year, we'll be offering two sections at West Point and South Davis and three sections of seventh-grade deep at Shoreline. Um, so I think more people are becoming aware of the opportunity. Um, we'll have no problem filling those those sections. Um, a lot of people indicated interest in deep. It sounds like your your child being one of them. But then when it came down to it, they they choose to stay sometimes at their neighborhood school, which is great. That's why we offer a continuum of services to to provide opportunities at whatever works best for students and their families.
And then one more question. Once you are in the deep program, like as a first grader, are you in the program for the rest of the time? Or is there ever a point that you're maybe reassessed and it's not the right fit for you?
That's a great question. So um those who test into deep as a first grader, most of them stay until third grade, and then at the end of third grade, everyone retests. So we re-identify at the end of third grade because fourth grade is an entry point year. And at the end of third grade, our current deep students, as well as all new applicants, are all put back into the same placement pool with no indicator of who's been in our program and who hasn't in order to provide equitable access for new students to be considered for entrance into the program.
Great. And and then one more just quick question about your funding. So the grant, is that a federal grant or state grant? I can't remember.
It's a state grant.
State grant?
Yes.
All of it's funded through a state grant or?
Yes. Yep, there's three different grants within that EASP grant, one for AP, one for IB, and one for gifted and talented.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Barber?
Excellent. Um, I was about the IB program. Is there an interest to expand that to other high schools?
Um, not that I'm aware of. It was offered several years ago at Bountiful High School, but there wasn't enough interest, is my understanding, to sustain the program. Um, but there has been consistent interest at Clearfield. We have a great IB coordinator there who's passionate about continuing the program. Um, and because we have funding to do so, we we anticipate continuing to offer it there.
Interesting. So if other high schools were interested, there could be funding available. We just need someone to head it up?
I believe I believe so. Um, I wasn't around with the the Bountiful IB program, so I'm not sure the whole history there. But um we would have to apply for that at an additional school.
Interesting. And then um I had one last question about the deep program. It's more of a comment. Actually, I um I think it's fantastic, and I love that it's expanding into junior highs with such a strong strong program going in and that there's the ability to have hybrid enrollment, which is, I think, really good for kids so they can have that association with their homeschools, or their boundary schools, sorry. Uh, I was at a high school or a junior high right when the results came out of who was going to be in the program and which schools that they had selected to be preference to. And the assistant principal was on the phone with two other assistant principals in the other junior highs, and I can't tell you how hard they were working to make those schedules work. It was like the draft. You were watching kids come in and they're going, we'll take, we'll take English here, and then he can stay, and then we'll make sure he has enough time to get back for like band or whatever it was that he wanted to take it as boundary school, you know, whoever these students were. And it was just so impressive. I don't think we're realizing how hard we're trying to make these programs work that really are logistical, logistically very difficult, but we see the value in them. So huge thank you to everybody behind the scenes for doing that.
Thank you for that. And and you're right, those those junior high administrators have worked tirelessly to to get this program started and to give these options for students and families. So thank you for noticing that. One more question, sorry.
Okay, sorry, back to the money. So are we utilizing the maximum amount that is um given by the state? We're taking as much of that as we can?
Yes, absolutely. And it and it varies year to year. Gifted and talented specifically, it depends on how many LEAs apply for the grant. That will determine how much money each LEA receives. So um our our funding this year is quite significantly less than last year because of that. But we 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 take as much as they will give us.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um, so explain this. You you had in your presentation an appeals process. Explain that. Was that for parents who felt like their children should qualify and didn't? Is that, explain the appeals process.
Sure. There's actually two different appeals processes. One is a testing appeal. So if if there was an extenuating circumstance when a student tested, for example, they were ill or there had been a death in the family, um, and the parent is concerned that maybe the student didn't perform as well as as he or she could have, they can fill out a testing appeal within, I believe it's ten days of the testing event so that they could be retested using a different form of the test.
I see.
There's also a placement appeal. So if parents feel like their their student um maybe didn't get offered deep placement, but they should have, or they didn't um get the location that they preferred, then they can fill out a placement appeal. We have a placement committee that looks at the data initially and makes the initial placement offers. We also have a separate deep appeals committee that meets to to consider those placement appeals. And they, um, again, we collect anecdotal data, additional data from classroom teachers, um, and the the information that parents share to consider those appeals. And then the appeal committee makes a decision of whether or not that student should be, the placement should be given or should be changed.
Got it. Um, quick question on the on the AP ambassadors in high school. So their job is just to talk it up among their peers or or is it more formal than that? What do they do?
Right. It it's just more, you know, and I know Woods Cross has done this, having students at kind of the back-to-school night or the um the college/university night, just having students there of various ethnicities who can encourage other students who may be underrepresented in our early college programs to to kind of give them that tap on the shoulder, like, you can do it. I did it. I succeeded. I passed the test and you can too.
I like that. Okay, lastly, um, I I have a good friend who's a deep teacher and and she's wonderful, doing a great job. Um, since we're going to have this in every elementary, are we having difficulty finding um teachers that want to teach deep? Um, and then once we do find them, do they typically stay with the program or how does that work? And how are they chosen? Is it an application or principal choose them or what?
So deep specialists are at every elementary school in the district that do our deep enrichment groups, the pull-out groups. And they are classified employees. They're paraprofessionals. And they um they simply apply for the position. Um, often it's through word of mouth that they hear, you know, from someone else who's participated in the program that that might be something that they're interested in. Um, they do a phenomenal job for for not very much pay. They're essentially um a classroom teacher for those students, um, pulling, working with grade levels K through six and and creating curriculum and teaching them curriculum, um, identifying them. They they do a wonderful job at that. As far as deep magnet teachers at our um elementary magnet um schools, those teachers are either gifted and talented endorsed or they are asked to complete their gifted and talented endorsement within three years of teaching in the program. So last year, we made um a large effort to to communicate the opportunity to take gifted and talented endorsement classes. We, um, especially because we had a junior high program starting, we had the need to get a lot of teachers endorsed in a short amount of time. So we offered classes um for district employees, um, gifted and talented endorsement classes just for Davis School District. We had a cohort of about thirty teachers. Um, and many of them have just finished their gifted and talented endorsement. Um, so we now have a pool of teachers that we can reach out to when there are openings within our deep magnet program. Um, and they already, they can hit their ground running because they have that background and they have that endorsement already.
Got it. Thank you so much. Um, if there are no more questions, uh, just one more?
Okay. Sorry, about the about the junior high. So is that currently replacing accelerated math and and honors or are they still separate tracks? It's replacing accelerated math?
No, no, that's a great question. Thank you for asking. So accelerated math is still continuing. That's um where seventh and eighth-grade math is combined into one year. That's not actually part of deep, that's part of our STEM department, but we use the same test to identify, we use the cognitive abilities or COGAT test to identify students for accelerated math and also for junior high deep placement. So deep is not replacing the accelerated math. In fact, we're not offering a deep math class because we already have that option in place. So most of our deep students are also taking accelerated math.
So currently, it's mostly English Language Arts, is that what you said? But you're planning to expand to science and some other, some of the core topics?
Right, so this being the first year, we offered deep UTAS studies for seventh grade, and as well as deep English Language Arts for seventh graders. So next year, those students will continue into eighth grade. It'll be deep US History as well as deep eight English Language Arts. But the seventh grade students who will be beginning will also have the opportunity for deep science. So really, the day, for those hybrid students, that when they go to the deep magnet school, they'll likely take all four of their core subjects at that deep magnet school, since three of them are deep classes and one is the accelerated math class.
Are you finding that's affecting like the honors enrollment in those junior highs? Is it kind of replacing it? I know honors, it's just subjective, you just choose to enroll.
That's a great question. So honors has largely been left up to each junior high to determine how they want to do honors classes. Some have chosen to continue with the cohort model where students are grouped together. Some are doing an honors designation model where they have, you know, additional project work or some other opportunity to do something further, to earn that honors designation. So deep is not intended to replace honors. Again, it's, we're offering a continuum of services and options for students. So honors classes, any student can choose to participate, it's a self-select thing, just like AP. However, deep is something that you would test into and be invited to participate.
Great, thank you, sorry, I have so many questions.
It's been a very interesting presentation, and we so appreciate the good job that you're doing. I was gonna say something else, but I think we're out of questions. Thank you for answering so many questions.
My pleasure, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are going to hear from Mr. TJ Strain, Student Growth and Achievement, about the focused graduation pathway. Mr. Strain is our Teaching and Learning Department Director.
All right, well, I'm excited to talk today about the focused graduation pathway. About three months ago, Director Flocken, she emailed me saying, hey, have you heard about the board rule change? And so she had sent it to me, and we were really excited to read this new change in board rules. And so the focused graduation pathway is really just an additional pathway for our high school seniors and juniors to be able to start catching up. And so really, this provides an opportunity for our students to get back on track. Sometimes, we have a handful of students in eleventh and twelfth grade that come in heavily credit deficient, and previously, I remember as an assistant principal at Clearfield having some really difficult conversations with students that, you know, we'll try to do everything we can, but sometimes there's just not going to be a way to recoup that credit. And so we'd do everything we could, and sometimes we'd refer to adult ed and do all the many options, but sometimes there were just not a lot of ground to cover in the amount of time that they had. And so this pathway really will benefit those students who, a variety of students. It could benefit students who are returning from homeschool and perhaps don't have the sufficient credits as they come back. It could also benefit students coming from out of the country, or students coming from other states. Most of the time with other credits, we always honor other state requirements, but sometimes there are discrepancies that we just need to help students out. And then we also have students who maybe didn't do well in ninth or tenth grade, and then all of a sudden, in eleventh grade, they're going, okay, I need to start thinking about graduation. And so maybe they've delayed some things, but most important, I think the greatest thing about this is it still connects the student to their home school. So they stay enrolled at their home school, they wouldn't need to leave their home school, and they stay connected to their home school while they're preparing to graduate. I love this, this whole concept. Rick Wermelley, he talks about sometimes students will dig themselves into a hole. Or sometimes someone has dug a hole for them, and they're stuck in that hole. And the worst thing we can do as adults or educators is just look down from that hole and say, we hope you get yourself out. I know that our great faculty members, our great administrators, counselors, do everything they can to throw ropes down into that hole to help our kids get themselves out of that hole. This is just a big rope that we're really offering students to be able to pull themselves out of that hole that perhaps they dug, or someone else has dug for them, and now they're just having those consequences. So I think this, the most important thing is this provides some hope for some of our students to be able to dig themselves out of that hole. So the qualifications, it's only eligible for, only eleventh and twelfth grade students are eligible. They have to be heavily, significantly credit deficient, and they have to be enrolled in their home school or their DSD school. They have to have a ninth grade reading level, we assess that every year through the CAPDSS anyway, and so we'll already have that data. And then they'll need to meet with a counselor and parent and create a pathway or a plan. We would then enroll them in a GED prep course provided by the school, and during that time, we would give them pre-assessments, they would have access to content. Experts would come in probably once to twice a week, and just sit down and make sure they're understanding those concepts, and then they would do some of that self-work on their own. And then after they, they get, when they're ready, and when the data shows that they're ready, they would then go and they could take up to those four testing areas. Previously, if they took all four tests in the GED, they would have to withdraw from their high school. This is one of those things that this law, or this board rule changes. They can take all four tests, they can receive credit, up to thirteen credits for passing all four tests, and then at that point, they can stay at their home school and continue to take their other courses that they might need in order to graduate. Each test is about thirty-six dollars. We're trying to see if we can put that on the fee schedule so that if there are concerns, it could be fee-wavable. But I've already reached out to Jody Lunt, just saying, hey, if there's issues with paying for the test, would the foundation be willing to help out? And she said, of course, we'd love to help out in those situations. So we'd probably have the schools have some type of scholarship that students could apply for, and then as they go through that process, they could use those funds to take the test. Students would still have to meet all graduation requirements, so this, these thirteen credits potentially that they would receive from taking the GED test would then open up their schedule to take some of those other graduation-required courses. So this would just allow them to get to that twenty-seven credit diploma. They would still have to get that, all twenty-seven credits, and meet all the other graduation requirements to participate and walk at graduation. If they wanted to, they could still use this to get the twenty-four credit diploma, but that wouldn't make them eligible to walk at graduation or participate in the ceremonies. And then, just to make it easier for access, we are looking at, to see if we can become a GED testing center. I've already talked with the main person at assessment, and she thinks it's a great idea. She does a lot of the testing, Jody Breg, and she thinks it would be great to be able to become a testing center. So we're looking at what the qualifications and the expectations are for that. And then we could even have schools, as needed, transport students just within district policy to the testing center. I know if you have a group of five to six students, we could always reserve one of the district vehicles and drive the students to the testing center to make sure they have access to that. So with that, any questions about the focused graduation pathway?
Ms. Price?
So will this go into effect for the 2025-26?
It will, so tonight, we're just presenting it, and then it would have to go through formal board approval. And then after that, I have to apply to USBE, and they sort of say, yep, you're ready to go. Schools don't have to do this, and school districts don't have to do it. And so there's just an application process, but yes, we would start next school year.
Ms. Mercer, and then Ms. Hogan?
I'm actually wondering if Marcy Flocken can also help answer this question?
Yeah.
I know that when I went and visited with Principal Flocken, she mentioned that there is a program that allows, when taking the GED test, to identify exactly where the lacking is on those tests. And is that going to be available at our home schools as well? And that, will we be able to use that as part of the targeted curriculum for helping students through the pathway?
Yeah, so I've already talked with Marcy, and we've sort of, or Ms. Flocken, I've already talked with her, just saying, we want to learn as much as we can from her experience with the GED and how to prep students in the best way possible. And so we want to get all those tools, all the things, all the resources that they've been using in the adult ed setting to prepare our students.
And follow-up question with that. I talked with Principal Flocken about this as well a few months ago, and was so excited about this proposition. And I'm so glad to see this moving forward, and I really love that it keeps our students at their home schools. In my experience with students that are lacking credits, and any student in general, having that connection with their home school where they're known, and they are close to home is hopefully going to help our graduation rate significantly. I know that at Woods Cross, as part of our community council, we'd funded our Wildcat Academy that was, has been hugely successful and has raised our graduation rates. And I am really excited about this pathway program to even continue doing that even further. So thank you so much to Principal Flocken for bringing this to us, and thank you, Ms. Strain, for moving this forward, I'm excited about this.
Yeah, I'm really excited. I can think of at least five to six students every year that I was at Clearfield that could have benefited from this, so I think it'll be great.
Ms. Hogan had a question.
Okay, I have two really simple questions, and then more broad question. The first one is, the kids that are going through this, the students going through this, are they still attending classes?
Yes.
At the school?
Yep.
Okay. And then the fee that is the test fee, who benefits from that fee? Like, where does that fee go?
So that goes straight to GED. So GED charges the thirty-six dollars per test, and so that would just be paid straight to... We wanted to still have Davis School District pay for it so that we can look at fee waivers, because if we just had the student pay directly to GED, then we wouldn't have the opportunity to help out some of those students who qualify for fee waivers, and some of the students who may not have applied for fee waivers but still have some financial difficulties that maybe we could help out.
Okay, and then my last question is kind of a more broad question. My only concern with this is wondering, how do we balance this out so that the students that have fulfilled all the requirements the other way and gone to school and worked really hard, how do we help this not diminish what our diploma means? Does that make sense, or our graduation?
Yeah, and I think...
What it means, the work it takes to achieve that?
Yeah, and I had some of the same questions, just as I was looking at everything, but I think, I think there is intelligence with bringing it in at eleventh and twelfth grade, because now we can say you are in a position that we really, it's go time. Like, it was go time two years ago, but you still didn't want to go, and so now we really need to get going, right? And so this provides one of those opportunities. So I think, I think building those relationships is still going to be key, and I think our counselors do a great job of just trying to stay on top of those students in ninth grade, in tenth grade, but now they have another tool at their disposal in eleventh and twelfth grade where they can say, look, yeah, you haven't been doing what you're supposed to for maybe two years, or you haven't been as focused, or maybe there was life challenges, and who knows what could have happened? But now it's time to really make sure we're moving forward. And really, the GED, the GED isn't an easy test. I mean, it is a complex test, and it does require students to study, and it requires students to meet a specific threshold of high school equivalency. And so it's not an easy test, and anyone who thinks it's an easy test, they should go take it, because...
So you feel that it's vigorous enough to mirror the classes and the other things that the students are going through? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Strain, thank you so much for your work on this, and Ms. Flocken too. I am really excited about this, I love this program. And I was thinking about Ms. Hogan's question, you know, because I love the whole analogy. We're throwing the rope down there to them, but they're going to have to be the ones to grab hold of the rope and crawl out of the hole, so I love that, and I agree with what Ms. Mercer said. I love that they can stay at their home school and do this. This is going to help those students be successful with this, so it's great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Anofrio, can't wait to get up here and talk to us.
Sorry. President Gerard, Superintendent Lindbergh, and members of the board. You're not used to seeing me for a policy on the workshop, but what we're doing here is we're trying to get this through before our July one deadline. So this is new legislation that's brought us a great new policy which allows us to give up to six weeks of paid leave for parents who are birthing children. So in most cases, this would be the mother who gets the three weeks, we're giving birth to the child, and the other parent would get up to three weeks for being the parent. So this is workshops, you don't have to vote on this, but if there are any feedback or any questions you might have, we will be bringing this again to our board meeting, our next board meeting.
Okay, any questions on the policy? Ms. Hogan?
Just a quick question. So the postpartum recovery part is for the mother, the person who gave birth, and then the other...
Parental leave?
Parental leave is referring to the other, the father, the partner.
But there's some other conditions in which it would present, like adoption of a child or adoption of an adult with cognitive disabilities, things like that.
So if a couple was adopting a child, would they both get the parental leave, or just one of them?
Three weeks, yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on this policy?
Great, we'll see you next time.
Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate you. Okay, we have reached the end of our agenda, and so we will dismiss. We did pretty good, under an hour and a half.